It's spinning again. We are now live.
We're good?
We are good.
It was time to charge.
Mm-hmm. And everybody's microphone should be on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting for order. Sorry for the short delay. Facebook wasn't letting us in right away. Anyway, um, this is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County Chief, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, at 7:05 PM. Have our council chambers. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Johnny Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mal Suede.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Ashley Coronado, city clerk Carrie Bagley, finance director Matthew Gurney, public works director Logan Dodd, operations manager, Tim Cox, police chief, Joel Ward, building official, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Um, for a moment's silence tonight, I would encourage everybody to stand with us for a moment of reflection and then we'll say the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a majority, a legal, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't have any pro- proclamations or major announcements for tonight, so we'll move on to call the public. Uh, I don't have any from the public. We have one for item seven. So with that, we'll just move on into general business. So first order of general business is item one, which is accounts payable. We have a motion for accounts payable.
I wish that we pay accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable. We have questions.
Yeah.
Mayor, go ahead.
On page, uh, number one, on gasoline, synergy petroleum. I ju- I would just like to know, um, the amount. This is a bit high. Is that affecting, if it can give us an idea to why? Is it because, because gas prices, we will end our budget? I would like to have just an update if possible on this. Seems like it's on point. I mean, it is. Was there a budget on this? Was there a budget? So far, okay. Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna just get an idea before it gets too late into the year. Okay. So it's within the budget. Yeah.
Anything else? Anyone else have any questions on accounts payables? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. See you on the street. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. We have items A through E tonight. First item is approval of minutes for May 16th. And we have a one approval for a parking facility runaway use permit for the Brats, um, use of Tombstone Canyon. That will be on, um, Saturday, October 28th. And we have three special liquor license applications, uh, all submitted by Bisbee Pride for their events. That's coming up soon, from June 16th to June 17th. Do we have anything that needs to be approved? Anybody want to discuss something there? Seeing none, I want to take a motion to approve accounts payable as shown.
I move that we approve the consent agenda by item C through E.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as shown, items A through E. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Hearing none, the ayes had it. So move. Um, next item, I'll wait for a minute. I gotta get that item three on my computer. This will be, uh, one that we tabled. So I'm going to make a motion that we pull this off the table to consider. It's on our agenda, um, given with, uh, with the coverage of how much, um, a lot can be covered with improvable services. So do I have a second to agree to pull this off the table for consideration?
I second.
Okay. A motion and a second to pull this off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Ayes had it. It's on the table. This will be a discussion of possible approval. We notice an intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three ten. This is amending the zoning code nine point two, definitions by adding a definition called partial coverage. Partial coverage. As in part, a parcel of your land. Amendment article five point two dash R, zoning residential by adding the maximum partial percentage for lot coverage for new construction. To tables five point two and five point two, five point two point three point A. And the amendment article three, five point three point one, purpose to exclude such requirements from historic overlay district. I asked for this to be tabled because I wasn't sure that we were handling what needed to do about a historic district. That if these rules went into effect in a historic district, it would really stop most infill because the lots are so much smaller. And so, uh, our illustrious city attorney here fixed it up for us. And if you'd like to make any, uh, what we did to this, just basically to exclude our historic district. Am I correct?
Yes, essentially the historic district overlay already has its own special rules and requirements, uh, with the VRV and stuff. So these requirements are excluded for that district. Um, and what it does is just establishes the, the percentage of lot coverage for, uh, for structures. To where you're, you're not in enough, where you have situations where you have, uh, a house that's taking up eight percent of the, of the lot. So you want to be able to maintain that, the, the open space. And, and separation between dwellings as you see them pass with fires and things. If you end up with small setbacks and structures that are built up, you, you can end up with fires that spread rather quickly throughout the community. And it's a very common, uh, most, most communities have minimum, have maximum lot coverage requirements for, for construction involved. And this would apply to, to new construction going forward.
Only new construction?
Yeah. Some people like to discuss, you know, whether something is grandfathered in or not. This is a, this is a situation where existing properties would, would not be affected. But if you were to go to do new construction, so if you wanted to add on to your house or do an accessory dwelling unit, this would be going to have to be calculating what, what size of an additional accessory dwelling unit or garage or whatever you wanted to put in could go in.
Basically, deals with improved services, so the water can soak back into the, into the ground. About three, outside recharge and also helps runoff. So you don't have so much runoff in the city. That's the main reason. I will make a note that I just came back from the city of Washington where my daughters, and they're working on redoing their house and their, their allotment is thirty percent as much as it can cover. So we're a little more liberal here. Uh, questions? Anybody on this? So I hope we cleaned up a bit. Okay, seeing none, I want to take a motion for, for, it's a law. Who's going to take it?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O twenty-three dash ten. Amendment zoning code nine point two definition by adding the definition of parcel coverage. Amendment article five point two dash R, zone residential by adding the maximum parcel percentage for lot coverage for new construction to table five point two and five, one, two, one, three, eight. Amendment article five, one, three, point one, purpose to exclude such requirements from the historic overlay district.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-three ten. This is a motion to intent, to intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three ten. I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. You may answer. Moving on, this will be new business. This is item four, public hearing on truth and taxation. And the public hearing in discussion for FY twenty-three twenty-four proposed budget for the city of Bisbee. Um, Carrie, if you'd like to tell us what we're doing. I think we hold it. And I'll hold a public hearing.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is a public hearing. Another increase in the property tax levy as well as a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four budget. Um, regarding the property tax levy, the tax rate per one hundred dollars on assessed value has actually decreased over the prior fiscal year from three dollars and six cents per one hundred dollars to three dollars and one cent per one hundred dollars. Um, however, the total assessed value of all property in the city has increased. The state does not allow more than a two percent annual increase in the amount raised through property taxes. Um, so the decreased tax rate along with the increased assessed value results in a property tax revenue increase of twenty-four thousand, six, sixty-three over FY twenty-three, which is a two percent increase. And final approval of this property tax rate will be filed before the council on, on June 20th. And the hearing is also for the twenty twenty-three twenty-four budget.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to open a public hearing. This public hearing will be open for truth on taxation, for discussion of the proposed budget and also the tax assessed valuation. To, uh, anybody in the public that would care to speak against this? Seeing none, is there anybody in public that would like to speak, uh, for this opponent? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any written for a final.
No, sir. No.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we will, I'll ask for a discussion from council. If they have discussions they'd like to, or questions about what we're doing here. All right, uh, with that, um, I think that we don't really need a motion. So we will deal with this in a special session right after this.
Yep.
So another brief thing for our speakers. All right, moving on, item number five. This will be a discussion of possible approval of a contract for publishing services for the official newspaper of record with the Bisbee Observer. It's yours last year.
That's mine.
Will you give us a scenario?
Sure. Every year we're required to go out to bid for our newspaper of record. Um, this year we only receive one bid, as we normally do, from the Bisbee Observer. Um, there was a small increase of fifteen cents, um, between last year and this year. So we will be paying five dollars and twenty-five cents per column inch per publication.
All right, we have any questions about the Observer being our record? Yep.
I just wanna, you said the increase was fifteen cents?
Fifteen cents.
Is this, uh, within the normal increases perhaps in the past?
It is, yes.
So basically was in fact over?
Not at all.
Like this is, okay.
Not at all.
Just for clarification.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion for item five.
I move to approve the contract for publishing services, official newspaper of record for the Bisbee Observer.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for publishing services with the Bisbee Observer. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Hearing none, the ayes had it. So move. You may answer. All right, moving on, item six is a discussion of possible approval to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase fifteen ten dash eight Arsenal body worn cameras, including software, chargers and docking stations in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Chief Cox.
Do you want to do that yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, basically, this is what it is. We're requesting a purchase body cameras for our officers in our department. As you know, body cameras are a great tool and they're used, uh, on a two-way street. They hold accountability, professionalism, and standards for my officers, but they also hold accountability to the public. Um, we're requesting this because it's more and more becoming the standard throughout the nation for police departments to have body worn cameras. Um, there's federal grants available to departments that do have body worn camera programs, which, which is always something I'm looking forward to. Um, and they're just routinely becoming a part of what we have. And you guys have all heard the saying that a picture tell is worth a thousand words, video is worth a million. We can't argue with that. Um, to simplify it as much as I can, um, this is different than other body camera programs that have been presented to you before, mainly Axon. Uh, Axon's one of the leaders in the body camera field. Um, a comparable cost between this and Axon, I did the bids and sought the quotes. Um, for the exact same amount of equipment, what I'm asking for with Axon, it would be a five-year lease, not a buy, and it would cost the city almost ninety-four thousand dollars. This is a one-time purchase of equipment and a once every five-year purchase for the licensing agreement for the redaction and, um, facial recognition software they go with it. Um, that'll allow us, it's not a redaction of the video. It doesn't cut out the video. The videos can't be altered. What it does, it allows us to blur out the gross stuff and the graphic stuff. Um, and it also allows us to run the faces that are recorded through national databases and get a hit if we're looking for someone. Um, this is going to be a twice payment. Um, I'm asking to spend what I had budgeted and set aside throughout the year through, through my capital equipment. Uh, at the end of this, this fiscal year, uh, which will be a ten thousand dollar payment roughly, which will pay for all of the hardware. And then when I get my fiscal year twenty-four budget, I'm asking to make a fifty-five hundred dollar payment, which will purchase the software. Um, the only other additional cost that's not on here is because we're waiting for the city IT department to get back to me is a cloud server that will need in order to store the videos. That will allow us to get our videos up and running. Um, certain city officials can have instant access to it and it'll also allow the county attorney to access them so we don't have to spend money making copies, putting it on a disk, driving it over to the county, dropping it off. They can just access it, excuse me, access it in their office through the server that we're running. Um, I haven't gotten an SML on that yet, but it should be around five to seven thousand, I think is what it's going to cost. But again, that's a one-time cost. So altogether, the program for the city of Bisbee will cost roughly twenty thousand dollars. It's a one-time expenditure with the exception of the fifty-five hundred, which will be every five years, which makes that software eleven hundred dollars a year. Um, I can tell you that I have been spending many hours researching this. This company is, um, very well liked and they're well liked for the fact that they are the cheapest in the game, but they don't have the cheapest equipment in the game. Um, there are many departments in the Midwest, down south, that are using the equipment. I spoke to a couple of sheriffs. They are in love with it. They actually got rid of Axon and went with this company because of what they offer. Um, and there's two in New Mexico that just picked it up. And from my understanding, one of the local county sheriffs in Arizona up north is picking them up as well. So we won't be the only ones who's going to support it. And of course, it comes with the standard warranties and things like that. But I, uh, I honestly believe this is something the department needs. I think it's something my officers need and I think it's something the citizens need as well.
Thank you. Questions? Sure, go ahead, Emma.
Please, how long do we have to keep, keep the recordings off of the?
There are certain retention schedules that we have to follow. Um, so class one felonies, class two felonies, and I think class threes don't quote me on it, um, like murder, second degree murder, homicides. We have to keep those for ninety-nine years, sometimes plus, depending. Um, other things like minor pedestrian contacts are thirty days. They get washed out. That's more of a department policy than it is a standard. Um, misdemeanors, one year. Fel- most felonies, seven years because that's prosecutorial timeline. Um, some of them are until end of sentence. So if we get prosecution with sentencing and they go to prison and they're still eligible for appeals, we have to keep them until that's exhausted or until they serve their prison sentence and they're done. Um, and that's part of what that software does for me, is I can go in there and set rules and it just sits there and sits there and sits there. And then one day the time's up and it gives me a reminder and I go in and go click and it's gone.
Um, I know when this came before us before, I think we need it, um, for public safety, for officers' safety. But the information wasn't there when it come before with our previous meeting.
Yes.
So I appreciate, you know, that you've done, done your homework and you have all the facts and figures and we know what we're looking at. And the cost is, for what it provides is very minimal.
Very reasonable.
I think, yeah, I would, I would agree. I think it's time to have these for the citizenry and, and action of the offices as well. Uh, this, this seems like a good package.
Yes, sir. And one thing I didn't mention is, uh, on the table later, this company also offers a three hundred and sixty-degree vehicle recording system that covers inside and outside of the car that can be added to this. Again, it's just an equipment cost, not a software cost. And once we buy it, it's ours.
So you said, uh, purchase it and, um, there's a warranty on it. So they would maintain it if there, if there were malfunctions, et cetera, and?
Within the warranty period, yes.
How long is that?
I believe the warranty period on the chargers and, uh, external mounting equipment and stuff is ninety days or a hundred and eighty days. The camera themselves are two-year warranty. Um, and again, that's, even if you're outside of warranty, I researched that part of the cameras. If I had to buy another camera, it's four hundred and ninety-nine dollars versus with Axon, their cameras are almost eighteen hundred dollars. So, I mean, even if, and they break, it happens. It's electronics. I've had my personal one go flying down a mountain while I was chasing something. So I'm not going to say it's not going to happen, but it's warranted. And that warranty period, um, since I mentioned the mountain, it covers anything. They don't care what happened to it. If it's broken, they'll replace it. Fifteen years. Yeah, I believe it's two. It might be one, let me check, but I think it's two.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, uh, maybe about three questions. Let me start with the first one. Did we establish some policies and procedures on use of the cameras? For example, when do we turn them on, when do we turn them off? And how, how we go about this? So because anytime we implement new, new policies, I just want to make sure that we find something that's going to be useful, that's going to be utilized. And there's policies regarding this, if you can help with that question.
Policy has already been written by me. It was actually written with the help of the Department of Justice. Um, they provided a template for me. I filled it out. I sent it back. They reviewed it and said, you're good. So it's within, okay. It's within federal standards and state standards. The state of Arizona does not have a body camera requirement like some states do. Uh, I actually reviewed Colorado and Washington state because they have state laws requiring the use of body cameras. So that helped me, guide me through the policy. Um, the policy's not enacted. It's just written because I didn't do anything with it until I know I'm going to get the cameras. Once that happens, uh, that policy, of course, will go to Mr. Estes for review legally to make sure we're, we're in those guidelines. If it's approved through him, I can present it to the council or provide you copies because eventually it'll end up on the website for the public who will get it.
Just a follow-up. So we, we're gonna approve, uh, some funding with our policies that you can go back and, to Joe, and come up with a policy. My recommendation or my comment on this, maybe we should have all this ready for us to go. At least the policies, the procedures presented to us, because when you want to spend something, you want to make sure it's implemented, we can implement it, it's doable and we don't have issues. So my recommendation would be, or my suggestion is, and that we have these policies before I go and say buy something for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, this will be my, my comment on this. My second question to this, or second comment, uh, you said fifteen thousand, but then here's another five thousand, five hundred. We don't know exactly how much it's been, five thousand, but the cloud services, am I right? There's another five thousand.
The cloud service is the cost of a server.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I've reached out with Ashley and RIC department and I was given an estimate between five and seven, but I don't know exactly what it is.
And this will be?
And that's going to be budgeted. It's already budgeted in the capital equipment for next year.
I briefly spoke to Jeff. It's not even going to be that much.
Okay. That's not the issue. It could be a dollar, but hopefully that this should have been presented with this. This is what would be my recommendation. So we can, because it says fifteen thousand and then there's another five thousand. So I'm gonna approve the fifteen thousand and you're gonna come back later for the, for the second of the roll. I think we're breaking it down, but this will be also my recommendation with this.
My reason I did that, just so I could clarify, is because we're coming up on June 30th and I have to have that money spent or I lose it. That's why I'm asking to spend it now.
Okay, so this, this, so this some technicals that I have to spend?
Is the end of my capital equipment that I've been putting aside for the year.
That's good. I'm trying to clarify this.
That's why I split it.
Okay. Uh, ongoing, ongoing costs, uh, I didn't see anything for this, uh, for the, you're saying the five thousand, five hundred for the server, but with these companies, as far as I know, and you can correct me if this, there's some probably ongoing costs in maintaining the, the, the cloud services? And I would like to see some numbers in there.
There's no cost with me. The equipment is mine.
How about the services we record in the cloud?
It's part of those off-world package that we're paying for with the fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. And then later on, uh, that's for what, for how many years?
Five years.
Five years.
So left.
After five years, do you have an idea how much the cost will be?
Uh, from what I was told with the vendor and stuff, their cost on that software package hasn't changed in ten years when they started.
Like I said, uh, personally, I don't, I think it's a good thing. It's good for you guys. It's good for the public. But I think I prefer that if this, but now you, you mentioned that you have to spend it before the fifteenth. Uh, I don't know, uh, what the mayor or the others will think about this. Uh, I prefer to have had it all so I can make a proper decision. This, that's my personal view. Thank you.
All right, so just to help clarify, we're not spending fifteen tonight. It's ten thousand and there'll be five thousand on the next budget next, after June. So it's not fifteen plus five, right?
Ten plus five.
Ten tonight and then?
That total is going to be fifteen.
Fifteen total.
And here's another five thousand.
And then, well, and, well, we don't know that. Then there'll be the, the cost of the server.
Okay. From, from speaking to Jeff, it's probably going to be the cost of a desktop computer. That is it. It does not require a server. He has reached out and spoken to the other municipalities that have this service. So it will be probably the cost of a desktop computer.
So it's, it's, storage is a lot less now. So anyway, just to clarify that we're looking at ten thousand tonight, another five thousand, which will be ongoing every five years or maybe with an increase. Um, the one motion I would like to add to this, to be honest with you, is, and I, I agree with Mel in, as far as policies, that I'm fine with buying it, but before they go into service, then I want the policies in place before the service.
I can send it to you before I go home tonight.
Well, no, I want, it's true. I want it to come to us. We approve the, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
It's going to take a while to get these in.
I, I had planned for that to happen.
Right. So what I'm going to say is, in order to satisfy this whole situation, is, is we will allow you to put the order in and start bringing them in. That gives you the, the check mark to go ahead and get the policies going and in place. And then when everything shows up, the policies are done and, and you can start using them, but.
Yes, sir.
I want the policies in place before we start to use them. Does that make sense?
Yeah. That will be, that's like. Oh, hey, sorry. Oh, didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, the fee that you guys are talking about, that you says is not more than what a desktop, is that a one-time purchase?
Yes.
So, and you're saying it's $5,500 for five years. Is there any way to negotiate a longer contract? So at even, or discount, or to be locked into that same price, even though they said it hasn't changed? They say that all the time. But I mean, is there any way to get longer loss?
I asked for every available option, and what was sent to me was a one-year, a two-year, a three-year, and a five-year. They didn't even have a four-year. And I asked which one was the better deal, and I did a little math, and it works out that five years is a little better deal because it ends up dropping at like a 50, 100 bucks a year based on how long you go. Unfortunately, 10-8 video has nothing to do with the software. It's just the software that they have that's compatible with them. It's actually another company outside of 10-8 that provides this video service. And I'm not an expert. It was just partially explained to me. That's because if something comes up legally, they have the expertise where they can go in to court and say, this is what it does, this is how it works, and this is what it happened.
So in this purchase, is there going to be one for every officer, or one for every officer on duty, or how's that work?
It'll be one for every officer up until 10. I'm allocated 11 officer slots and three sergeants. Eventually, I plan on adding to that. But with our current staffing need, or staffing at the moment, 10 will cover me for at least a year and a half because it's going to take me that long just to be able to get the numbers in the department where they should be.
So I too am concerned, you know, that we don't have a policy before, like over the bar, or after the fact. So my question on that is, within that policy, you said you already started and, or whatever, it's been stripped in. Does it have included in it when they're required to turn it on, when, at any time when duty, do they turn it off? Because that's going to be an issue within the ongoing. Does it have any notifications if it doesn't occur?
Yes.
Oh, I forgot. So what's going to happen to the officers if that's included in the policy? What are the procedures as far as charging? That may sound really simplistic, but dealing with Chromebooks in school, that is one of the biggest issues. You know, oh, it's not charged. What do we do?
So if you look at the quote with the chargers, you'll see that there's an eight-made charger listed there at the very bottom of the first quote, or at least hopefully it's the first quote. Called the Arsenal Dock. That one is going to go into the squad room, and it'll charge up to eight cameras at a time, and it's capable of, I believe, charging them up to a full charge in two hours. And then each individual camera comes with a single charger that will go home with the officer so they can dock it while they're at home.
So back again to the policy, turn on and turn off. So is it standard procedure for a police officer, okay, I come on, I put my camera on, click it, it's on. I don't turn it off until I'm back in the station going home? Is that how it works?
Depends on the circumstances. There's certain, there's certain times which the Supreme Court has recognized where a body camera can be turned off for non-adventury purposes. Examples of which being sexual assault victim interviews. They are not recorded. Another example being officer conferences on scene are not recorded because you're talking about procedures and non-public disseminated information. So things like that aren't recorded. But the general standard, and I can tell you the policy that I wrote is, as soon as a call is dispatched, the camera goes on. As soon as the call is completed, the camera goes on.
So how are they checked out? Are they issued as like part of their equipment that they will keep as long as they're an officer?
They'll be permanently issued, just like a shotgun.
Okay. So this may sound like a dumb question, but is, do they have to download? Okay, so I can't clap when I film, and my camera's on, and I filmed something. Is there a process where I then have to download what's on my camera, or does it automatically go to that clock you're talking about?
No. As soon as they walk into the station and hit the Wi-Fi signal, it starts downloading. Or they can download it directly to the server, which is faster. So if we're working an immediate need case, it would be docked, downloaded onto the system faster just so they could access it for review.
So when it loads into that system, is it going to be identified by a number or that officer's name, or how do I know it's my film and not somebody else's?
So each camera, while you're watching it, will have what they call video descriptors on it. So the recording will have date, time, and then in one of the corners, I forgot which, it'll have officer's first initial last name badge number. Or I can assign unit number. I can set it up multiple different ways. When the video is put onto the server, it's saved under the report number, but it also has the officer, the lead officer on the case assigned to that video as well.
So once it's automatically uploaded into our server by the Wi-Fi and when it connects, does the camera then automatically clear itself, or does the officer have to clear it after? Or do we clear it, or is there a certain amount of time to clear that?
The camera could be set up several ways. It can self-clear. It can require a manual clear, or it can just be set on a loop where it just starts recording over itself after a certain amount of time. But that all just depends on how it's set up and what we find works best for us.
So last but not least, what type of training is going to be available for officers? I know it's a camera, but there's, I'm assuming that there's probably some training that will go with this.
We will conduct an in-house user training, a policy review. Because any time we do a new policy, we bring officers in and train them up on like given highlights. So there'll be an in-house policy review and an in-house training on how to operate, how to download, and how the system works.
So again, like I said, I agree. We do, they're useful tools. We do need them. But the lack of policy bothers me also. But I would like to see that policy to us so we can approve it before we do anything after this. And that's, I think, what you said.
That's right.
Yeah.
So far, that's the goal of his service.
Exactly. Yeah.
Then I'll get the feelings of this.
Right. Yeah.
I'll give one more.
Does the individual officer have the capacity to delete something before it's downloaded?
Absolutely not. There will be, the deletion is set up by what they call the super user or administrator. And each individual user on the system is set up through that to have certain access to certain things. And I've already accounted for that. There will only be one person and one person only that has the ability to delete a video, and that's going to probably more than likely be me.
Wouldn't he do it, Pat?
Maybe watch us live on his cell phone.
Just added comment. I'm hoping all this will be part of the, once we, part of the policies and procedure, and this will come up. Once you come up with this, everything that I just transpired, this will be written and will be, will be part of the policies and procedure once we...
Most of what you guys have asked is already in. It's, because my goal with the program was to meet federal standards for this because I want to go out for federal grants. So I wrote everything based off Department of Justice best practices and...
Okay. Just want to do a part of this.
Yeah.
So I think that meets a lot of our concerns is that, just before they get put on and start to be used, that we review the policies and that they are in place.
I got another line here.
I know.
And I'll add my two cents in on this item because I've dealt with body cam videos before as a city attorney prosecutor. They have their limitations. They only record what they are aimed at. So depending on whether they're worn on the body and things like that. But I can tell you, we had a case in Page where it was an officer involved shooting, and it saved the city from a multimillion-dollar loss. It also helps. And I've seen cases where it helps with allegations of officer abuse or things when they're transporting individuals. There's substantial benefits from them. They do have their limitations. And in the past, I think the issue with Bisbee has been the cost with the systems because the systems can be expensive because of the equipment, the storage, the redaction. It's great that this one comes with lit the software because I can tell you that that was an issue that Flagstaff quickly became aware of when they implemented their body cam system, I think back in 2014 or 2015. Shortly thereafter, they had an officer involved shooting where the officer was shot and killed. They had national media requesting copies of videos from all the body cams, hours and hours of redaction. Then they had, shortly after that, a co-ed at the college campus running around stoned and naked, and for some reason, got tons of requests for that camera video. So the, there will be some additional time and expense that goes into redaction, depending on cases and when those situations come up. Because there are times where we do have to do redactions of either blurring out faces, or redacting audio if somebody's giving a social security number, or if there's a minor in the video, different things like that are for reasons for redaction. But this also avoids what Bisbee's had in the past where, you know, officers have been wearing their own body cam videos that they purchased and supplied for themselves because they want that protection. And now you're going to have uniformity, you're going to have a policy. And I think the reason you don't have the policy prior to getting the approval for the purchase of the equipment was because there had been prior discussion of doing this, and it had gotten rejected. So I think it was, first, let's make sure that we're going to get approval for the equipment. We've got the policy in place. It's a short turnaround to get it reviewed and get it back to you. And absolutely, we wouldn't implement a body cam program without having the policy already in place and ready to go.
That's your question. You talked about redacting. When they do redactions like that, either audio or video, do they do like a subtitle, like, oh, all of a sudden, the guy gets talking, redaction due to confidential information? Is that put into it?
Just depends on the case. I can tell you, I did redactions to, it wasn't officer video. It was ring video from a homicide that an insurance company wanted for some reason. There's online software that is really good, and you can go actually frame by frame with doing those redactions. So it just depends, you know. Each program's a little different. But what it will do is, you know, normally, there would just be, you would not hear the audio because of whatever. And typically, it's just that confidential information. If it's someone giving you a witness name, whose witness names are redacted in a written report, you know, typically what is redacted in a written report would be redacted from the video.
I was just curious because there's always that one person, ooh, you're hiding something. Yeah, it's a book in the video. And I thought you said it's some kind of identifying factor.
I got, from the demo I got, that's why I specifically said that you can't alter the video. So in the demo, even if we redact it, the length of the video does not change. And it says on that, like it blacks it out, it'll say, this section, and you have a time, like one minute, 20 seconds, has been redacted.
Okay. That was kind of what I was...
Yeah. But if, so if it's a 10-minute video, you're going to get a 10-minute video, which might be five minutes of nothing because you can't change the length of the video, but you can redact.
Just as long as there's, I was just hoping that there was some identifying factor because I guess there's always something up there that's going to...
I try to think as much as I can. And Ms. Hill, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I would have just read my notes, it's a one-year warranty on the camera clip.
All right. Anything else? Okay. I'm going to make a motion. I move to allow the visual police department to purchase 15 10-8 Arsenal Body Warm Cameras, including software chargers, docking stations in the amount of this year's budget of $9,309 and $5,500 next year to be used as soon as the... Policies are established and in place.
I second.
All right. This motion's second, which I'm not going to repeat. And it's over five, so I'm going to ask for a real call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kine?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So thank you, Jake.
You know, go real good with those new cruisers out there.
Yeah.
I just wonder, are they getting the question on?
Why are they keeping going their way?
That was going to be part of the...
City that ride.
All right. On the number seven, this is a discussion of possible approval of Bisbee American Rescue Plan Act funds, the installation of electric car chargers through APS Big Charge, Arizona. I'll take this one because it's been mine. Baby, I'm sure Matt will fill in if I mess up. But yeah, it just started well over a year and a half ago, working with APS. They, of course, the first location after it was scoped out, of course, doesn't, didn't meet the requirements because you can't put them over a drainage ditch. So it was sent on hold, and then a new location was determined up in our parking lot, public parking lot up in Souls Avenue, up there, just where the old, the cycling building used to be, just down from that. So what was worked out with APS, through some negotiations, this is actually a $9,823 outfit. We will obtain $5,800 for it. APS will be picking up over $4,019 of that $9,800. So even though it says here that it's $9,800, but our portion of it is only $5,800 for. So, yeah. And so I just wanted to introduce it. Now, Andrew, you have three minutes. I haven't said. Then we'll discuss.
Evening. I'm in Law 139, Clausen Avenue. Andrew, I'd like to say I really appreciate that this is finally getting done, and it's a good thing. And it's a good location. And hopefully, we can move on and never revisit this ever again. And to that end, I'd like to point out that on the agenda item, it says 2012 some candy. And I would like to ask that whoever makes the motion to please specify explicitly that it is absolutely not approving this at 2012 some candy. Because this has been incredible amount of stress for me, my neighbor, my family. And I'd love to just move on and never have to think about it again. And I'd like to say that the changes that were made to that intersection, I have no problem with that. I've sat there in that shop for decades and seen so many near misses, seen people's bumpers get ripped off. And I don't, you know, a lot of people in the neighborhood think it's, you know, they don't like changes like that. But anyway, I'd like to swipe the slate, done, and move on, and everything's great. And hopefully, going pretty good. To explicitly say this is absolutely not for 2012 some candy.
This is the original price that we paid, that we were negotiating back then. That's why it's on there. So, yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. But absolutely, this is, these have, we've already up here approved the, we actually sent the stuff to the county, the easements and so on, so that they can dig the channels and put them in up there at Soul. So...
Yeah, I understand that it's not, you know, there's, being presented as zero chance, and it's all done. I accept that.
I'll make it part of the motion. How's that?
Great. Appreciate it.
No bet. No problem.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Sheriff? This is a dumb question. Do all chargers, electric chargers, UGDA's chargers, charge all electric vehicles? Or are there some vehicles that have to have special chargers? Does that make sense?
There's two different types of plugs. There's basically Tesla's and then the other one.
Then a standardized plug.
So will this accommodate both?
No, it will have the one plug on it. But most Tesla owners have an adapter.
Okay. It's kind of like when you go to Europe, you have your... Okay, it's kind of like, uh, when you go to Europe, you have your.
There you go.
Okay, that's right. Somebody said to me, because I had made a comment that we were putting in, you know, chargers, so they're like, oh, is it going to accommodate?
Well, it kind of reminds me of the VCR tape versus the data max. Who's going to win in the end? I don't know. But, but yeah, Ford just went with, um, the electric.
Well, Ford is just in the, announced that they signed the deal with Tesla. It's going to require adapters, uh, but they will, and because Tesla is a proprietary, you know, APS has to use the, the generally available, but Tesla owners are able to have a, an adapter that will allow their car to charge off of, off of the other standardized formats.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't maybe like, oh, maybe one requires.
There's only two, Tesla's one and the standard's the other one, so. These will be the standard one and, uh, the, we're yet to set up exactly how we're going to charge, there's several ways to char, to, to charge for the power. One is by the hour or, uh, one is by the time. So if they're used a lot, you can charge people X number of zippers per, how long they're there, that way they'll come and get their car and move it out of the way. Or if you discharge for a number of pedal locks, so it's, it's, right now, I'm just saying charge for the pedal locks if they start to be used a lot and we need to keep people moving around and then you change it over to time.
So how does it pay for it? Is there like a debit card?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's all done by internet that you, you charge for it, you have a.
Yeah, there's a, there's an app you can use that you have your information on, or you can slide in a credit card for that specific location.
And we get the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to pay APS for electricity and we'll get present, yeah, because it's an electrical, so we'll have premium on that.
So we'll charge enough to cover the electricity plus a little bit to cover the, the charge point requirements they, that they, to be in that system over here, so.
Just hoping to be able to put some miles on my wife's car. She has a, an all-electric Mark Eden, she's had it for, for two years in August and has 5700 miles on it. And I told her, I, I've had my Jeep for eight months and I've got 30,000 miles on it, so. But I can't bring her car to Bisbee because there's no way to charge it and it doesn't have enough range to get here and back.
Yeah, just for clarification, how many cost for the, just one cover at a time?
No, there's two chargers, each charger has two ports.
There'll be four.
There'll be four spots.
That'd be right.
Anything else? So I think to get a $10,000 setup for about $1,500 bucks is not a bad deal after, after all this time, you should get it for free, I don't know. Uh, so just to, um, evade any future issues, um, I would be glad to make the motion back here. So I move to approve use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to pay for the installation of the electric car chargers through APS Big Charge Arizona to be installed at the Souls parking lot in Old Bisbee.
Not for 2012 some candy?
It's going to be in Souls.
Ah, come on, man. Why not, what? Why can't you just say it?
Ah, not, not on 2012 some.
Thank you.
And I have a second. Oh, who's in favor? Oh, the solar five, uh, let's have a multiple call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. So move. All right, moving on to number eight, this is discussion possible approval of ARPA funds to purchase sewer pipe and fixtures for the wastewater collections department. I don't know if you're against from Matt, you finally get to get up there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Uh, so this is again, uh, we did this roughly around this time last year, um, and this is just to purchase, you know, sewer pipes, elbows, connectors, anything, uh, that we are, um, you know, we need, this is, was budgeted in the ARPA funds list, uh, and we're, are not going to exceed $20,000. Uh, actually, I think it's roughly a little over 18, because I wanted to keep it under it, so. Uh, yeah, and this is for, a lot of this mainly gets used in Old Bisbee and that's what it was, uh, you know, allocated for. So we've been doing a lot of pipe, uh, installations and we had problems and we just end up replacing big sections in Old Bisbee, so. Any questions?
Yeah, yeah. Here, you, you're not specific, if you're not specific, just, uh, do you have a list of what pipes? I mean, just to clarify, I'm just going to buy a bunch of stuff and, like, maybe some specific?
Yes, these are, um, every, we have six-inch, eight-inch pipe and every end, uh, multiple elbow and angle hits with, with, um, um, with our sewer lines in Old Bisbee, especially they're on all different angles. We have to have multiple selections of angles and, and rubber couplings as well for those as well.
So, okay.
Is it ductile?
No, this is PVC.
This is PVC?
Yes, 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 sir. Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Okay, just, so is there, uh, basically you buy them, you buy them now and use them throughout the year? Are they a specific area, a specific product or just, this is a spare part? I mean, can you just clarify this because it just says 20,000 and I want to buy those and just, I mean, if you can, little more, I, I don't want to give, you know, just, can you give me a little more information?
Yeah, yeah, so this was allocated in the ARPA funds.
Okay.
For specifically, uh, Old Bisbee sewer line replacements.
Okay.
And that's where the majority, sometimes we might need them in other places for emergency and we, and we have to go up to, up to Tucson, we'll grab these and use them, but the majority of this is in Old Bisbee because that's where our major problems are and that's why these were allocated for, for.
And we want to buy them now because we want to deal with, before they get, yeah, just, yeah, just as a.
No, just because at this point, we're running out of the pot, the, the list of pipe that we got before, of course, but, and we're, we're doing this now.
Restocking.
Restocking, yeah.
At least at a.
And a lot of this pipe is, you can't get it here in town.
Okay.
So we have to order it. If we have sewer overflow and whatnot, uh, and a break, we got to act quickly.
And there's no specific vendor? I mean, usually come up with a vendor, who you buy, you just buy them from what, I mean?
This is just to, um, to use the ARPA funds.
Just use the ARPA fund?
Yes.
And later on you can come with the, okay, that's clear, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
So I guess it goes back to what you just said, we're talking 20,000, did you have to add to it or?
No, uh, the vendor that we will be dealing with is corporate contract, is under corporate contract.
Anything else? Want to take a motion? Everybody?
I move to approve, uh, to use ARPA funds to purchase sewer pipe and fixtures for wastewater collections department in the amount of 20,000.
A second.
I'm a motion second to approve $20,000 to purchase some sewer pipe for the wastewater collection department for repairs. No call?
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, so move. All right, we'll move on to the last agenda item, which is the update from the city pool. We'll turn this over to Matt, who can, uh, fill us in and introduce our speaker.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you again, Mayor and Council. So, um, we're doing a, a small update for the pool. I mean, I've had one, I think, about a month and a half. So, uh, I have Rainy from Kimley Horn, uh, our engineers have been working on this, and I'll give a little background, um, for what we've been doing a little bit. Um, about a month, month and a half ago, we drained the pool, um, to be able to make, do some measurements on different pipes to see, make sure, and where all the, are the inlets there are in the floor of the pool, uh, how many are there, so we can figure out, hey, is this enough, uh, and where all the pipes are, because we don't have the drawings for the pool. So that's what we've been doing, we grabbed that, we drained it, did some measurements of the different plumbing pieces, uh, and then gave that back to Kimley Horn who's been working on, uh, on their work for this, uh, since then. So I'm going to have Rainy come up and, um, I think you want to connect to.
I have a presentation, I want to be able to connect to it, Laura, don't drive.
Um.
Sorry about that. They didn't bring me the, bring me the documents.
Yeah, um, I can try it out, yeah. I think it has a, okay, perfect.
My own bad place.
There you go.
I'm finding, I'm going to keep watching Tubar.
There we go.
Okay, great. Okay, so, Mayor and Council, thank you for the time this evening. I think in the past, our staff has tried to communicate with the status of this study and assessment was through email and phone calls and so just offered to come down and in fact, he was basically about to have us come down today to give a presentation. The actual assessment that we were contracted to do will have in the city's hands by the end of this week, so Friday, and what I'd like to provide is just an overview of the summary of the findings and the status of what we found and what the, what the next steps could be for the football. So just an overview, I think everybody understands, so we were brought on board, uh, to evaluate the existing hydraulic and electrical conditions. The pump failures out there have been, um, ongoing and so to look at the hydraulics, both water going into the po, the pool, water coming out of the pool, and sizing the right pump, and then looking at the electrical supply in the building that actually would supply power to a new pump, make sure all of that was, um, aligned and, and working well. And then in the report, recommendations for regulatory compliance, which I'll talk about in a second, and then the recommendation for a pumping system actually picking up pump and a vendor with, with associated costs for all of that. And at any time, if anybody has questions, please, we, we feel free to bring them in. So the compliance part, I think everyone understands, Cochise County Health, um, is , uh, the, the compliance agency, they follow Arizona Department of Environmental Quality rules and in there, this is classified because of the volume of water as a public swimming pool, so it's different than anybody that had one as a private swimming pool and it's actually, um, following the Arizona Administrative Code Title 18 that has requirements for how the pool is, um, operated, how it's disinfected, and how many turnovers that you have in the pool in an eight-hour period. So current code requires that that total volume of water is displaced and moved through the pool in an eight-hour period. It's not that the water goes away, it gets through the pump and comes back into the pool over an eight-hour period. That's to help with disinfection, that's to help with making sure that the chlorine, um, is distributed equally, that sort of thing. The new code coming out, and we think it's in another year, but potentially two years, is a six-hour turnaround. So when we did the calculations and picked the pump, we took that into account and made sure we picked a pump or selected a pumping system that would get you to your eight-hour turnaround system. Um, in addition to that, there's electrical upgrades, knowing there's a new pump and looking at the older or, or the existing electrical system and knowing that this pump was pumping to a pool and potentially pumping up to the roof for heating on occasion. So one of the recommendations you'll see on the electrical side is a variable frequency driver, BFD, so the pump can operate in the range of going straight to the pool and coming back in a loop or actually going up on the roof and coming back. So that's all in the report and we'll walk, you can walk everybody through that. But those are the overarching requirements of trying to work to this pump. Now, in the pump system, and I got some graphics, it's not just the pump, it's the pipeline that goes into the pool and it's the pipeline that brings the water back to the pump. All of that is modeled, all of that is calculated. The diameters of those lines are important, the type of material of those lines are important, and that's where not having as-built plans or old plans is where we went down this road and the staff has been fantastic, we asked them to verify the number of inlets coming in, the number of outlets coming out, and as best that they could, the diameters of each one, okay? So any questions on that, sir?
Sir, okay, Matt, you're saying the new rule is going to be six hours?
Yes, sir.
And we work on it to eight hours, we were trying to get to eight hours. So would that be a problem later if we do the eight hours and we have to come back later on and deal with the six hour?
So that's, good question. The recommendation for the pump meets the six-hour requirement, that way you're not having to come back and put a pump in a year or two. You'll meet the eight-hour requirement by making the six-hour requirement, and again, on a variable frequency drive, you can modulate that so that you're not necessarily running it at the six-hour requirement today and can run it when you need to. So that's in the report and that's the, on the pump curve, that's what we selected, so you don't have to come back and buy any of your, okay, okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, so a couple of things on supply and return pipeline, and I've got some graphics coming up to show, to show that. Um, and on the returns, so, so the supply and the return pipeline, the pipeline that gets into the pump is actually distributed into 17 different ports in the floor of the, of the, of the pool. That's the original design. It's pulled out through two floor drains and that's the looping system. And all of that and the way it was placed and the way it was designed is in compliance. Part of compliance is a maximum velocity through, into the pool, so you're not, you know, scouring pipe, but you're not damaging the pool or injuring anybody if you're bringing the velocity in too fast, and a maximum velocity out. So I have six feet per second is the maximum velocity that we can push it into the pool and 10 feet per second is the maximum velocity we can pull it out of the pool per code, needing less is fine, but that's the numbers we're working on, six feet per second, 10 feet per second over that six-hour period with 141,000 gallons of water. So that's, that's the whole system, it's not just the pump, I just want to remind, it's the piping going in and the piping coming out. Um, this is going to be very important in a minute, what you see, that we can pick a pump, we can make electrical upgrades, but the part we're going to have trouble with is the piping going into, into the pool, that's where we're going. Um, 17 inlets, the reason I say that, that it requires 17 inlets is based on the flow pushing, that the, the pump is pushing water into the, into the pool, all 17 of those are needed for that pump to operate correctly. If 17 of them aren't in place, the pump starts to operate in a different part of its design curve and it starts to wear out quicker, okay? And so one of the potentials we may have right now is that all 17 aren't in operation and we can buy a new pump, but you'll, you'll burn the pump or you'll use it beyond, the quicker than its useful life. So that's, again, it's a whole system of not just the pump, but the piping going in and the piping coming out. And then the new pump design, so you'll see, I, I have a conclusion that the, a new pump and a new pump is appropriately sized, it doesn't need the current inlet, it doesn't work right now with the current inlet and outlet piping as configured, so I'll probably get that connected. We selected a pump, so the assumption of inlet piping all in place and working, outlet piping all in place and working, we've appro, we've sized the appropriate pump to purchase and you could install it today and then I'll, and I'll go back and reiterate that Daze isn't doing that.
If we have, it has to balance.
Very, yes, sir. So this graphic here is a cartoon version and this is our assumption of how a pool is working without as-built plans, without construction plans that are destroyed or damaged. The building where the pump sits is on the far right side, so I don't block anybody. And the blue lines and the arrows coming in are the piping below grade and coming up. So there are 17 circles of water that would, as designed, comes into the pool and then two floor drains that are larger diameter that pull the water out and get it back to the pump, so it's a complete loop. These are all spaced, sized and, uh, located in accordance with the Arizona code. There's a distance requirement and a diameter requirement on the discharge side, that's in the compliance. There's a number of inlets you're supposed to have based on surface area. It's two of these inlets per 600 square feet of surface area. This is appropriately sized as well. The challenge is, we believe, working with staff, these are the only two that are actually pushing water into the pool, these two with the big blue circle on. So it's like putting your finger on the garden hose, I mean, it is constricted. We're get, trying to push all of this water in, meet that timeline and turn over the water and we're only allowed to get that water into two inlets, 15 of them are not operating. That's the challenge that we. That's the challenge that we've come into. And so the staff, again, I'll tell you, I mean, we've done a number of different things and, you know, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, licensed professional engineer in the state, water and wastewater is what we do, pumping systems is what we do. They've been helping a lot without having as those. Draining the pool, taking dimensions, coming back with the data so that we could model it. But ultimately, without having a full working inlet system, um, we're, we're at a stop at this point. And I'll talk about some potential next steps. Uh, but we've also developed, and you've seen in the, in the, in the report is a single line diagram that's for you all to have as maintenance folks, and you should have them, but we have a single line diagram of how the sand filters are working, how the pumps are working, whether you're flowing to the solar heaters or whether you're going straight to the pool instead. So we've got all that for you and that was with the help of the staff as well, and then we came out and did our field measurements. Um, and then in there, you'll see the math of the calculations that we made for the volume of the pool so we could determine if the seventeen inlets were exactly, um, appropriate based on code for how much water you should have per, or six hundred square foot of, of, of pool. Um, so I'm gonna stop there with the, with the pumping equipment and open it to any questions, I think, before I get into the electrical side, the electrical side is a little bit more straightforward. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Um, so years ago when I put the first solar system in, um, we had in-house plumbing. Plum, yeah, not plum, which it did anyway. But, yeah, so they went in, and this was before the big freeze that broke the pipes. So it's been repiped a couple of times because, uh, anyway, so the lines went and they went from a, I thought they were eight-inch then, they might have been six, the previous, they're, they're not there now. They took it from that, they dropped it down to a three-inch pipe and shot that up into the solar system. And that was the main flow back in. And so that was one of the reasons why the, the pump burnt out and we probably had other electrical issues because we had all the force of that pump, uh, going from a huge pipe dropping quickly down to a three-inch pipe. And that was the main flow back in.
Absolutely, and you're changing hydraulic conditions, that, at that point, so the pump is having a fight to figure out how to do that, which you can appropriately size a pump, don't know if the pump was sized for it with the retrofit or to add on a solar.
They just kept going back and replacing it or refurbishing it year after year from, like, from the original. So that was one of the big issues, and it was always the wear interior. You go up there and touch that pump and it was hotter than, in the daylights, because it was being overworked. And that wasn't taken into account. A long time ago, there's ports on the side, uh, the lateral ports on the wall. Those ports at one time were used to vacuum and they were also used as an outlet. I don't know if they're still working, I had told them, I mean, we call them laterals. Another pool that I worked at, the laterals, were also, uh, ports that fed back into the pool. That was part of that whole cycle, it cycled in because it comes out of the deep end, sucks it out. And that, the two you're talking about, we call them the volcano. Because it's, when I talk swimming lessons up there, you woo, throw the kid on it, wee, and it grind along. And that was because of that, so.
Okay.
But at one time, a long time ago, I'm trying to remember what we're talking, a long time ago, those side lateral ports on the wall, right on the floor, those were actually functional and they used to be in the wall vacuum system. And so when you hooked it up, you could reroute your, um, the backflow in the back room and you could, there was another valve that you could adjust, and if you're backflowing, you're also vacuuming.
Yeah.
And then when you turned it back, reversed the system, then it would shoot out and it was also another form. And that's one of the things I told them about, check your laterals, they didn't know if they were collapsed because that pool's old. And some of those lines haven't turned sea. So that's my next question, if any of these lines you're talking about, like the floor vents and such, are collapsed, because that pool has shifted, that pool's been cracked, um, years ago, uh, there's a, and it supposedly rumor had it that there was a, what's that called, when the water, when you see cars collapse in this?
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole, yeah, supposedly there was a sinkhole that they were always worried about because of this crack. And that was before I was up there, that was years ago. So my question is, if that truly happened and we had a shifting, which would happen with a crack that another toilet did, would that cause, um, compromise the pipes? And if it did, can those pipes possibly be not irrigated, but I'll say vacuumed up for their system, and then replumb with those insert piping that so that would make them useful?
So I believe the answer to your first question is yes, and a lot of different things will have, uh, would have an impact on the piping, even without a sinkhole and even without movement, just the natural age of the pipes and just the type of soil which you have here. Those are different types of things that could potentially crack or damage the pipe. To investigate this at a one and a half inch diameter, which we think they are, which is small, there are special cameras, which is not what we do, but there are special cameras to TV these lines, and it's the same as a rotor ruder or something, but there's, there's some leak detection specialists that we're gonna recommend that could come out and actually camera the line from the pool pump area and try to figure out how to snake their way through here, or come back through the pool area and get back in and, and look in in reverse. Problem is, they're gonna confirm, I believe, they're gonna confirm that the line's, uh, either been plugged or, for being leaking or something in the past, and I, there isn't a, an easy way to repair them or replace them. They are typically inlet piping all in place and working, outlet piping all in place and working. We've appro, we've sized the appropriate pump to purchase and you could install it today. And then I'll, and I'll go back and reiterate the dangers of doing that.
If we have a pump, it has to balance.
Very, yes, sir, very much so. So this graphic here is a cartoon version, and this is our assumption of how a pool is working without as-built plans, without construction plans that are destroyed or damaged. The building where the pump sits is on the far right side, so I don't block anybody. And the blue lines and the arrows coming in are the piping below grade and coming up. So there are seventeen circles of water that would, as designed, comes into the pool. And then two floor drains that are larger diameter that pull the water out and get it back to the pump, so it's a complete loop. These are all spaced, sized, and, uh, located in accordance with the Arizona code. There's a distance requirement and a diameter requirement on the discharge side, that's in the compliance. There's a number of inlets you're supposed to have based on surface area. It's two of these inlets per six hundred square feet of surface area. This is appropriately sized as well. The challenge is, we believe, working with staff, these are the only two that are actually pushing water into the pool. These two with the big blue circle on them. So it's like putting your finger on the garden hose, I mean, it is constricted. We're get, trying to push all of this water in, meet that timeline and turn over the water, and we're only allowed to get that water into two inlets, fifteen of them are not operating. That's the challenge that we've come into. And so the staff, again, I'll tell you, I mean, we've done a number of different things and, you know, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, licensed professional engineer in the state, water and wastewater is what we do, pumping systems is what we do. They've been helping a lot without having as those. Draining the pool, taking dimensions, coming back with the data so that we could model it. But ultimately, without having a full working inlet system, um, we're, we're at a stop at this point. And I'll talk about some potential next steps. Uh, but we've also developed, and you've seen in the, in the, in the report is a single line diagram that's for you all to have as maintenance folks, and you should have them, but we have a single line diagram of how the sand filters are working, how the pumps are working, whether you're flowing to the solar heaters or whether you're going straight to the pool instead. So we've got all that for you and that was with the help of the staff as well, and then we came out and did our field measurements. Um, and then in there, you'll see the math of the calculations that we made for the volume of the pool so we could determine if the seventeen inlets were exactly, um, appropriate based on code for how much water you should have per, or six hundred square foot of, of, of pool. Um, so I'm gonna stop there with the, with the pumping equipment and open it to any questions, I think, before I get into the electrical side, the electrical side is a little bit more straightforward. Any questions?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, so years ago when I put the first solar system in, um, we had in-house plumbing. Plum, yeah, not plum, which it did anyway. But, yeah, so they went in, and this was before the big freeze that broke the pipes. So it's been repiped a couple of times because of, uh, anyway, so the lines went and they went from a, I thought they were eight-inch then, they might have been six, the previous, they're, they're not there now. They took it from that, they dropped it down to a three-inch pipe and shot that up into the solar system. And that was the main flow back in. And so that was one of the reasons why the, the pump burnt out and we probably had other electrical issues because we had all the force of that pump, uh, going from a huge pipe dropping quickly down to a three-inch pipe. And that was the main flow back in.
Absolutely, and you're changing hydraulic conditions, that, at that point, so the pump is having a fight to figure out how to do that, which you can appropriately size a pump, don't know if the pump was sized for it with the retrofit or to add on a solar.
They just kept going back and replacing it or refurbishing it year after year from the, like, from the original. So that was one of the big issues, and it was always the wear interior. You go up there and touch that pump and it was hotter than, than daylights, because it was being overworked. And that wasn't taken into account. A long time ago, there's ports on the side, uh, the lateral ports on the wall. Those ports at one time were used to vacuum and they were also used as an outlet. I don't know if they're still working, I had told them, I mean, we call them laterals. Another pool that I worked at, the laterals, were also, uh, ports that fed back into the pool. That was part of that whole cycle, it cycled in because it comes out of the deep end, sucks it out. And that, the two you're talking about, we call them the volcano. Because it's, when I talk swimming lessons up there, you woo, throw the kid on it, wee, and it grind along. And that was because of that, so.
Okay.
But at one time, a long time ago, I'm trying to remember what we're talking, a long time ago, those side lateral ports on the wall, right on the floor, those were actually functional and they used to be in the wall vacuum system. And so when you hooked it up, you could reroute your, um, the backflow in the back room and you could, there was another valve that you could adjust, and if you're backflowing, you're also vacuuming.
Yeah.
And then when you turned it back, reversed the system, then it would shoot out and it was also another form. And that's one of the things I told them about, check your laterals, they didn't know if they were collapsed because that pool's old. And some of those lines haven't turned sea. So that's my next question, if any of these lines you're talking about, like the floor vents and such, are collapsed, because that pool has shifted, that pool's been cracked, um, years ago, uh, there's a, and it supposedly rumor had it that there was a, what's that called, when the water, when you see cars collapse in this?
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole, yeah, supposedly there was a sinkhole that they were always worried about because of this crack. And that was before I was up there, that was years ago. So my question is, if that truly happened and we had a shifting, which would happen with a crack that another toilet did, would that cause, um, compromise the pipes? And if it did, can those pipes possibly be not irrigated, but I'll say vacuumed up for their system, and then replumb with those insert piping that so that would make them useful?
So I believe the answer to your first question is yes, and a lot of different things will have, uh, would have an impact on the piping, even without a sinkhole and even without movement, just the natural age of the pipes and just the type of soil which you have here. Those are different types of things that could potentially crack or damage the pipe. To investigate this at a one and a half inch diameter, which we think they are, which is small, there are special cameras, which is not what we do, but there are special cameras to TV these lines, and it's the same as a rotor ruder or something, but there's, there's some leak detection specialists that we're gonna recommend that could come out and actually camera the line from the pool pump area and try to figure out how to snake their way through here, or come back through the pool area and get back in and, and look in in reverse. Problem is, they're gonna confirm, I believe, they're gonna confirm that the line's, uh, either been plugged or, for being leaking or something in the past, and I, there isn't a, an easy way to repair them or replace them. They are typically below the foundation of the pool and work their way up to the floor. So that means you've gotta expose that area to put new lines in.
Another question along that line. So we talked about the solar panels that were on the roof, and that was an issue in the past, again, putting a strain on the pump. Would it be more feasible and more, more better, yeah? Better if those solar panels were then shifted maybe off to the side and lower, because with the gravity of less strain on your pump, you're not having one to pump it up.
Right.
And even if you're going through the smaller, you can, you don't have to do your whole water flow, wouldn't that be a more?
That's a great, that's a great point. So in the recommendations, we've got some ideas on, um, improving that system. Um, there's some cost to it, or having the pump with a throttle inbound for that, a pump can run on its curve and appropriately pump in either condition because of the variable frequency drive, the BFD.
One last thing as a more statement, a question. Years ago, um, they brought in a gentleman who went up there and, um, he had called me up and asked me, because I worked at the pool a long time ago, and was asking me about the different pipes. And the one main that feeds out on your, you've been up there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so when you're facing the wall in the pump room and you look down, where's that pipe that one that's been cut that is the laterals? So there's also one that's a six-inch next to it, I believe, and it's the main line that feeds back out to the volcanoes and such. In that, it didn't volcano like that until they went in and found baby suits, toys.
Yeah.
And so that's why I'm wondering if maybe your lines in the ladder are plugged with, because plastic toys were always a big thing back in the old days. And if that's the case, do they have, I've seen them before in other places, but the potential of a suction possibly that could maybe even clear the lines.
Or even a auger, like a rotor ruder, there, there is a number of those things. I think the first recommendation would be to actually try to get a look and see what's in there. And then if, this is gonna be, um, a personal opinion. If you're lucky, there'll be a way to fix a line in place. A professional opinion, I think, is you're gonna find more, not less, of places where the line is damaged beyond being able to fix any place.
So one last question.
Yes, yes, sir.
So hypothetically speaking, we're looking at this and we have the vents, I don't have the, they all looks on the floor. Is it possible and would it fit within safety code and health code if you ran above ground and put those in and then shot those out as your, and were able to cover them so there was no tripping, da, 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 da? Because I've seen in home jobs, where we've done that before.
We're, we're gonna find out and we're asking the state from the tripping hazard or whatever hazard it is, it's not a smooth bottom anymore and there's obstructions in the floor. But my background is in the water supply and wastewater side and we have that too, right? Irrators are floor arrators, but now you're installing something in the, in the floor. And what does that, what does that bring to the, to the city with all kinds of disturbances and, you know, public access? I don't know the answer, but that's one thing we started to kick around, how do we get this done on a temporary basis? And then maybe the city's able to budget an improvement, major improvement, to go address the seventeen or fifteen that need to be fixed. And again, until it's explored, they're, they're, we're really gonna, we're, we're providing a pump, we're providing that, that, the code recommendations, we're providing the electrical upgrades that can happen now, and the design for the electrical upgrades that can happen now. But that's still, I think, an outstanding issue.
My only question would be, if the floor supplies are toast, those stairs, could we put new ones in, in the side and not have to rip, till we dig down and put them in the side instead of coming up from the bottom? Is that, you, you know if that's code?
It, it's not in code now, but we could ask for a variance from ADQ for sure.
So that could be possible.
Yes.
So. Well, I'm just saying, so the first thing was you gotta figure out what we got, then we will start looking at the cost.
And, and to your point, sir, then you're excavating maybe two sides of the pool and able to, in just a couple of feet of excavation. So you, and then again, the depth of it, the other question is, it starts at three feet deep and it goes to eleven feet deep. So it's gonna be a shallow dig for most of the pool until you get to eight, nine, ten, eleven feet. And then this would be the more challenging area and probably the more costly to do that type of retrofit, yeah.
All right, I just, I didn't know if it was possible.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that they have a specific distance apart that they have to do?
Yes.
So, well, along what you were saying though, even if you, because they're gonna be shallower in the three feet, hypothetically speaking, yeah.
You're, you're missing this center side and it may require more, but if the code, the code is the, is floor, in-floor, for this size of pool. The rest of your code is two of these per six hundred square feet of surface area. So we can meet that code if we can get a variance or ask for a variance, but that's not a guarantee of doing something on this side.
So maybe even if there's, there could possibly be a potential of hopefully initial thinking that some of those are still gonna be viable and then we only have to do the funky floor variance?
Potentially, potentially. The other, the other potential is that if you can't auger and get under, you can get under and, and excavate the site and get out from under, which is not uncommon for plumbing problems in, in a home, you can auger through sidewalks underneath. This one gets challenging because of how deep it is, but you, they, you have to expose eleven feet back, which just starts to get wider for safety. And we're expecting, if they had any excavation that they have to do here, they're not necessarily hitting any of the native rock or anything else. This was cut open to build the pool, so we're expecting that to be backfilled, backfilled material that was backfilled and compacted. So it should be an easier dig than having to go on the, on the native rock. Oh, yeah. Any other questions on the pumping side? Sir? No. No, no. Are you looking at everybody? I just got here. There's enough questions. I just got here. On the electrical side, there's actually a list of about ten, um, recommendations from the electrical engineer that came out here. This is the kind of work that they do. But I just put up the, the highlights from there and I've got the report here, but here's the design. So I'm gonna go back to the list, but everything I talk about on the list is, is depicted on this design. So the, uh, utility provider improvements, I know that the, that the city's already started to contact with the city and, or with APS and started handling, you know, what improvements to need. But there was an old service coming in and that might have been contributing to the pump and other equipment wearing down faster than it should have. It's called, um, an open leg, it's two transformers providing three-phase power instead of three transformers doing three-phase power. So it adds an extra strain on a three-phase motor, for example. So that's an old configuration and- So that's an old configuration and that part, I think you guys, we brought that to attention early and there's some service provider coordination that you have to do for some of those things. But the rest of them really fall back into the useful life and the service life of all the equipment out there, whether the junction boxes or panel boxes. A lot of that is original equipment and those are electrical engineers, even, you know, seeing the report, they use this a lot beyond their useful life. So, so breaker boxes, junction boxes, the, the GFCI outlets, those are types of safety issues that the electrical engineer has strongly recommended they get replaced or addressed, mostly because they're sitting in that, in that setting of the pool pumps and the, and the filters, but more in line with the age. And they, they even cite the last time some of this equipment was actually manufactured in the seventies, for example, was the last time, certainly some of these panels were manufactured. The staff has upgraded, but jumpers in some cases, the, or breaker box, you know, breakings, but the actual housing and some of the cabling and wiring in it is still recommended for improvement. And then again, I said, this will be in the report, you'll have this in the report and this could be handed to an electrical contractor and they could give you, we'll, we'll provide an estimated construction cost from, from our perspective and from the engineer's perspective, but you could give that to an electrical engineer and they could come up with what the real equipment would be.
So the lights, the lights, years ago, they used to pop out all the time. And it was very interesting. And so then they got jammed in because we could never find the flex of lights that fit because they're outdated. So they did these MacGyver fixes and sometimes they got silica, sometimes they got little fat things stepped in them. And I, we had to watch and keep the kids, because the kids, they'd hurt their toes and then they would like drill in. So my question, I guess, is, yeah, it's pretty interesting. Are they going to, if everything goes to fluffy, are they gonna go and replace those electroferr those, those holes for better, for ones that are opaque?
That is listed as replacement of lights and it's in there and I can show you, I think this was the end of, yeah, there is a, you know, I'm gonna see my, the awful desktop that I keep here. Let's see here.
Do you pull ones?
Oh, yes. Do you want night one?
Well, what do we do? We don't, we don't have one.
We don't have one now.
When you have those pool parties.
It's good for security because you can, anything tells people if there's a jet block.
Okay.
Or a deer, or you know, what else has got this? Not that pool.
It was me, I turned off the PowerPoint and I went to Adobe file and...
Gotcha. I didn't like it.
Wasn't when you had, oh, I didn't have it. I don't know if I have it. There you go. That's not, it's almost mine. Oh, yeah. Is it mine?
It might be.
Oh, you need to move it over.
Yeah.
Probably the document somewhere up, down. Oh.
It's like split screened.
Oh, we should have dual page, my bad. Oh, well.
Okay, I'll get to the electrical and they have, they have some good pictures in there on, on, let me get there. Ah, here we go. Okay, so here's the electrical report and in there they've got the recommendations. They talk through the power and the older cables and the older connections, but to your point, there's even a picture of recommendation on the, on the light itself in the pool and it shows that they're, and they, and they talk about that they, they have a model number and an upgrade, a retrofit upgrade for that light and talking about this is an older style light, it should be replaced anywhere the light should be replaced in. That'll be part of the cost estimate as well to replace the lights. And again, outside of the drains or the pipeline coming in or out, these are actual electrical recommendations anyway, that, that building, that facility should probably. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's a tough one.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you have to be exact, based on your experience, how much will this cost? About part number, I need, you just give me a number. It doesn't have to be, I don't hold it to, because it seems like it's gonna be quite a bit, but it's like, if you could, I mean, you know, life.
I'm gonna take you up on that last part you just said because, because until we know what the condition of the inlet piping is, we can't give a number. However, a pump of that size, the electrical equipment of that size, just with the pumping equipment itself and the motor control net BRQ, right now those numbers are looking like seventy thousand dollars for pumping equipment. To add, to, we have a priority of electrical upgrades that will take this number to, you know, one hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars potentially, depending on what pipe work you have to do.
And excluding the excavation?
I, I, yeah, it depends. I mean, I, we, we can put that together and you can look at it as an ad alternate, like if we have to do this, we can certainly put that for you. The pump stuff is the hard, is, is not so hard to figure out, but the lead times are and the electrical lead times are involved. So we're in the twenty-six week period for, for pumps and electrical here. If you start doing panels, it starts to get a little further out. And some equipment that we're doing, you know, experienced on the waste water side, they, they talk about years, like thirty-two weeks and sixteen weeks for electrical equipment at this point. Thank you for letting me dodge your question.
I have to ask this question.
And I appreciate the opportunity to come in here and I understand there's been comments and, and back and forth, but I know from our end, our responsibility, we haven't been communicating effectively through the end, so that's why I came up.
Well, we appreciate you a lot to come out. We know this is a important thing to us and, but we need expertise and information is key, so.
Yeah, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with the, with the city. Thank you.
Sounds like you're gonna need a three phase backup too. I know where I'm finding it. No lead time. Okay. Well, that's the information we have at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, we'll just keep exploring with, find the information to give that more, more on the piping situation and make it advise us if maybe the best way to handle it.
Yeah, so going forward right now, we're gonna do a couple things ourselves, like this week or next week, but we'll be reaching out to what is, like you were saying, a company that we can hopefully camera it because it's inch and a half. We tried with our two cameras, it wouldn't work and we don't want to get that stuck in the floor, so.
Here's another quick question. So I talked about the laterals and there's a kind of pipe that I believe is for at least the laterals and if the laterals are scoped and the laterals aren't viable, I guess not for a better term, is there any way that they could possibly maybe turn it to inlet valves on the side more so than they were originally for the vacuum system?
Potentially, there could be. We still wouldn't need the number of, and that's what they need, but your comment's well taken. It could potentially be part of the equation.
So it's maybe some of them, yeah, some on the floor didn't work, maybe those could be.
Potentially, yeah. I don't wanna go down that shore and it doesn't need everything that you would actually need to be code to distribute the, I mean, here that there was a volcano, I'm not happy about it, but it confirmed what we heard and it mirrored the map we're showing.
Reality of it is, those aren't all individual seventeen lines, they're, they're, they're coming and so if you've got a couple that are bad, that makes the whole line bad.
And, and right, so you can't go worst, plan for the worst, it could be something that's causing all of them to break.
You can't go, you can't go and you cut one off and, okay. All right.
This is not my background, but as you're weighing everything, the cost of repair and engineering and excavating and et cetera, as you're weighing everything that's involved, is it more advantageous to start all over again with a new pool or to repair it as it is?
Just given the cost of the new pool.
Cost of new pool, minimum, three and a half, four and a half.
I know it's gonna be expensive.
I mean, that's kind of, that's a...
I mean, we don't know exactly, we don't know how much this will be in the end, if we get to an end, but we're gonna be looking at every option that we have.
I appreciate it. City hall. Okay. As there any, what I'm gonna do is ask for an adjournment, we're gonna then re-adjourn in just a second.